Hello, everybody. We welcome to the October 1st meeting of the Eureka City Council. It's our third meeting today, so we are well-practiced. And hopefully, I won't screw up this time. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Seaman.
Here.
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Mezner.
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Burgel.
Here.
All right. Will you join me, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And Mr. City Attorney, do we have a report of the closed-out session?
Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
All right. So we will move on to the mayor's announcements, where I am very excited to read our first proclamation of the evening, one that's quite special to me. So can I invite somebody from the Humboldt County Children's Author Festival up to the podium, and I'll read this, and then...
Oh, good. You're coming with me?
So, "The Humboldt County Children's Author Festival, October 2019. Whereas the Humboldt County Children's Author Festival started in 1975 as a one-time festival to bring well-known authors of children's books to visit local schools and has become a biennial tradition. And whereas on October 16 through 18, authors will visit more than 55 schools throughout Humboldt County, including several schools in Eureka, and will host a book sale at the library where the public can meet all of the authors. And whereas teachers and school librarians prepare students to meet their author," they take it very personally, "whose visit will promote reading and motivate writing by introducing students to books from a different perspective. And whereas the Author Festival allows students who may not have the means to visit a bigger community to have access to a variety of professional writers and illustrators beyond the redwood curtain. And whereas over the years, hundreds of authors who have written thousands of books have chosen to attend this festival for a fraction of their usual speaking fee because, as they have said, they value the Humboldt hospitality, the networking opportunities with other authors, and the impressive preparation and engagement by the local schools and students. Now therefore, I, Mayor Susan Seaman, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby commend the work of the many volunteers, supporters, and sponsors who produce this festival, thank the authors who choose to participate in the event, congratulate the participating schools and students on their engagement, and encourage the community to learn about and support this amazing educational program." Thank you, Susan. Would you like to say anything?
Well, not much, but thank you. We appreciate it. This is a wonderful event, and we appreciate you claiming it. And we have done this for how many years?
You and I?
Yeah. Too many.
But we love it.
The children are... It's just richer for the children, so we appreciate you. So thank you so much.
And, Mayor, we appreciated the year that you are one of our coordinators for the Author Festival.
Two.
Two.
That's four years, but no.
Yeah. So we appreciated you doing that for us, too.
It is an unsung thing that happens every other year in Humboldt. And the amount of... They fill up hotels with 25 different authors for four days in a non-peak season. That's a really nice thing. So I'm gonna...
Very good. Okay. Can we do a Kodak moment?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have someone to do a Kodak moment? Well, Ann's husband. I didn't know if Susan had any, but I think Ann's husband. Maybe we... Okay, Kodak moment, please. A few of us. Okay, come on, girl. And can we leave afterwards, and then they...
Yes.
It's nicely empty. Oh, there is somebody.
Of course, they are.
Okay.
Can I also say...
Waiting close.
I'm gonna say it when I go back.
Okay.
Yay.
Hey, thank you. Well, let's get out of the way. Continue.
Thank you so much. Before you go, I want to tell one of my favorite Author Festival stories. Pam Service lives in Humboldt County because of the Author Festival. She'd written more than 21 books. She was a git. We got her to come out here. She was walking around Old Town, walked into the Clark Museum, and landed herself a job. In the year I was the festival coordinator, I got a phone call from a creative writing student at HSU who said, "Oh, my gosh, Pam Service is gonna be here. I just read it in the Author Festival." And I was like, she lives here. And she was so excited, and it was just such a great moment. So I love to tell that story. Thanks, you guys. They're also a hard-working group. And now we have another fabulous proclamation from Councilwoman Castellano.
So this is a proclamation in recognition of Mary Price. Mary, if you'd like to come up while I read it, you're invited to. And I'm really excited to be reading this tonight. Okay. Proclamation in recognition of Mary Price, October 2019. Whereas the city of Eureka is committed to the well-being of all its citizens, and whereas 37 million people struggle with hunger in the United States, including more than 11 million children, and whereas a household that is food insecure has limited or uncertain access to enough food to support a healthy life, and whereas California is the state with the highest number of food-insecure employed adults at more than 1.74 million, and whereas the month of September has been designated as Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to the reality of food insecurity and promote ways for individuals to get involved in the movement to end hunger, and whereas the St. Vincent de Paul Free Meal has made significant efforts to address hunger, serving over 91,000 meals each year to people in Eureka, and whereas Mary Price has been dedicated to feeding people for the past 18 years at the St. Vincent de Paul Kitchen, during which time approximately 1,638,000 meals have been served, and whereas Mary Price has exhibited resolve, compassion, and diligent effort towards the prevention of hunger. Now therefore, I, Leslie Castellano, on behalf of the mayor and Eureka City Council, who hereby recognize Mary Price for her hard work in preventing hunger during Hunger Action Month this past September and all of the other months of the year.
Mary, you're welcome to say something. I'm guessing maybe you...
Thank you. Not one for words.
But there's somebody there with you. Maybe you have something to say, to add? Oh, other microphone works.
I can't think of anyone who deserves this recognition more.
We have a great presentation today from the CAPE program, but I'll just give a brief mayor's report, which is just a follow-up from Good Neighbors Week. We had several events last week. They were really fabulous. I held one at Hammond Park, and when it started raining, I moved it to my house. And I thought nobody would show up. And I had teenage blocks of teenagers came in to eat pie, and I think I had ages from like 16 to 90, and just all different kinds of folks show up and get to know each other and really talk about what we had in common and what our neighborhood was like. And everybody just really appreciated that ability to meet somebody that maybe they had seen for, you know, years and hadn't had a chance to talk to. I also attended events at Lafayette, where they had a Coast Guard flyover to start their event, Winsler Children's Center, where we had our police department, and Humboldt Bay Fire, as well as Recology there, teaching preschoolers about community helpers. South Eureka Neighborhood Alliance had a great picnic at Highland Park. Our own Community Services District and Ink People hosted the Children's Mural Festival. We sort of partnered with the Sea Set Team and St. Vincent de Paul for their block party on Wednesday. It was really just a joyful, heartwarming week of people appreciating each other and where they lived. So I just want to thank everybody for participating, and it was a great time. Now, I'm gonna invite Director Miles Slattery to introduce our next program about Uplift.
Good evening, mayor and council. So yes, staff is gonna provide an update about CAPE program in general, but most more specifically the Uplift program before Community Services, newly-appointed Community Services Supervisor Davis goes forward. I just want to give a brief kind of background. So we just recently went through an internal reorganization as a part of some of the cost savings that the city manager was looking to make. As a part of that, we reorganized CAPE, and we've established a Community Services Supervisor. Welcome, Jeff Davis, Community Services Recreation Coordinator, which is Caitlin Morell, more affectionately known as Mo. And then also, we have our co-pilot coordinator, Brandy Wheeler, and our assistant coordinator, Brice De Santos. And so I want to thank them for all of the hard work that they've done. And I also want to thank our CAPE Media one-man show, Joseph Carter, who puts together all these media productions and stuff. I think they're a great team, and I think that this efficiency will make us be that much more successful going forward. We also didn't talk a lot about the funding that's been given to us to allow for these programs to happen. We really want to thank the county and DHHS for recognizing the success of the pilot program for Uplift and approving the HEAP funding that we received to expand the program and make it a full-time program. And then also, all the local businesses and rotaries, Old Town Rotary, Southwest Rotary, Six Rivers Brewery. I know I'm gonna miss a lot of them, but the Skate Lab, we get donations from them for their skateboard contests. Anyway, we want to thank all those people that provides the funding for this to allow us to put these programs on. So Jeff is gonna... Excuse me, Community Supervisor Davis is gonna be providing an update on the Uplift
Thank you, Director Slattery. Mayor, council, thank you so much for this opportunity tonight. So yeah, the CAPE program was started about five years ago with the Community Services Department. At that time, we were Parks and Rec. And I think the Uplift program was launched back in November, late November of 2018. And since then, it has... We have served over 49 members of our community, and we currently have 39 active participants, nine of which we have gotten into permanent housing without any outside funds from local governments. And we had just received a HEAP grant that's gonna give us the opportunity to distribute housing assistance funds to those, so we're really looking forward to that opportunity. And those numbers I just had mentioned, serving 49 and serving 36, that was a really good start, but actually, since our homeless outreach workers started hitting the streets about two weeks ago, and that was thanks to Measure Z funding, they've been able to go out. And at our very last participant meeting, we've had about three times as many folks as normal show up. So they're immediately making a big impact on this program, and we're just really looking forward to future opportunities, especially focusing on housing first. And yeah, just really pleased. And I'd like to present a video that our media department came up with.
So CAPE is a community access project for Eureka. We started it approximately five years ago, and originally, it was first implemented to kind of address issues associated with disadvantaged children and homeless children. We partnered with local groups that are interested in helping out disadvantaged community members. And we started off with the youth aspect, went out, made contact with these individuals, tried to get them enrolled into different programs, whether it be our after-school programs, or our camps, or Hoopsters, or any sort of rec programming that we have. And what we did is it was a way to set up fundraising opportunities for local businesses to start donating to our program so that we can fund staff to implement programs and also to provide sponsorships to different programming that we offer. A lot of that started with Betty Chin. We did a literacy project with her to start off with. Then we went into kind of a Halloween costume drive. We did a Christmas event. Those type of things associated with helping out children and also fundraising to help with the programming associated with. That eventually morphed into helping out disadvantaged adults and homeless individuals. We started off with different programs like Pathway to Payday, the Rent Ready program, the in-house cooking programs that we did to basically help out homeless people with getting by and also giving them the tools to acquire employment through those processes. And then after that was established, then we started looking at an outside agency to do kind of a work program for like a homeless-to-work program with individuals. We looked at another organization that did this. We figured that we have the ability to do it ourselves, and that morphed into the Uplift program. And the Uplift program is not just a job training program, but it's also a homeless resources program. So we rolled in some of those other programs, Rent Ready, Pathway to Payday, those type of things, set up different milestones for these individuals depending on where they're at in their life so that they could reach those milestones, and then also set up the Job Skills Training Program, which is a component of the Uplift program that allows individuals that are homeless and are looking for employment to come in with a zero-barrier option to come in to get work. They work with us. They receive a paid stipend for that work. And it's not just literal removal. It's truly a job skills training program. We give them training on personal protective equipment, on string trimmers, on landscaping, on custodial duties, those type of things. We give them the actual training to do the work and then have them do work projects for the city and use these skills and build up their resume so that they can go after jobs. We've really increased the amount of Pathway to Paydays we have. We do them about every other month now. And so it's been really successful in kind of getting those participants in Uplift to get the confidence to go forward into interview process, realizing that they have that background and they have the training skills for these positions. And then we put them out in front of real employers and give them an opportunity to gain employment.
The city of Eureka and Betty Chin teamed up for Pathway to Payday, a job workshop series where participants have an opportunity to obtain employment.
So my involvement in Pathway to Payday is I speak to participants, particularly folks with issues in their background, criminal issues, or maybe gaps in employment. So I go over topics such as just filling out the application, being able to answer questions about their criminal background if they are asked, how to answer it better.
I love Pathway to Payday. It really encouraged me to find a better job, and I can't even believe how good the interviews went. I really was nervous, and they actually went really well. So I learned a lot, and I'm really grateful for Betty Chin and this program.
I feel we get great feedback from the participants. When we ask them after the first day, they say that we are very involved. They like to see so many people from the county, from the city, Betty Chin, participating and having passion, trying to get folks help with employment or finding employment. You know, it's nice to see people, like when their eyes light up, when they get an answer to a question that they might have not asked themselves, and they realize that it applies to them, and they see that they really do have an opportunity, and their confidence goes up. And that's really what I enjoy about the job, you know, getting people... Helping people to empower themselves so actually that they don't need us anymore. And that's my goal.
When I first arrived there, I really had no confidence in going out into the job market, you know, and finding myself some employment. By the time I left, I had unbelievable confidence and was able to go out in the community within two weeks of the program and get a job. The compassion and kindness that I felt from everybody was probably the biggest thing that really made me feel better, and they addressed all the issues that I had, you know, like gaps in my resume, helped me put my resume together to make it more appropriate. The confidence, you know, in the interviewing, by the end of the practice interviews, I really felt good about myself. I was able to go out on interviews and feel very confident and literally just go out and get a job.
When they offered me the position and the second interview, it was just, for me, it was just almost unbelievable that it was so fast and so professional and real. I was getting a job, and I was taking the next step into it. And it just made me feel great when I got in there. Well, I work full-time now, and it's great. The job's great. The people I work with, the co-op, are great. I'm part of a union now, which I never had been before, so it's definitely a good place to work. There were several other good places that came out there, too, and every one of them, as a matter of fact, and they were all actually looking for people. And I'm able to provide for my family, which is, I think, every parent's number-one primary goal.
Over 30 businesses have participated in Pathway to Payday, including Recology.
We're at the Samoa Recycling Processing Facility. This is the processing facility where most of the recycling from the county of Humboldt comes through. And so it's just a very important function for this community, and all of our employees and any employees that we've gotten through the Pathway to Payday are very proud of the job that they do. Well, they came prepared for their interviews, to be able to answer questions, be able to do the kind of things to impress an employer at the interview. And they also came to us and were able to express, you know, their dependability, which is something that we need a lot of. And they've come through. So it hasn't just been, you know, I gotta get my foot through the door, which they've done, which the city has helped them do, but also, once they're here, they know how to behave as a good employee for us. So we can be in a, hopefully, in a long-term partnership. And whether they stay with us or not, you know, we know that we've worked together to be able to build skills for the people out there in the community. Ricky has sailed through perfectly, and he's taken on the job just with really great spirit. And he's doing an excellent job. He was able to pass through our probationary period, and he's doing very well. I see him staying with us for a long time.
Oh, there's a lot of difference, and I'm glad that... Because the first day that I went to Betty's, when I heard about Uplift, and I had like 20 minutes to get to the first meeting, and I'm glad I did go because it helped me out. And then I went through, and it was good that not only did I make it through, but the people that went through with me made it. So it was good to see not only did I make it, but they made it as well. I would add that anybody coming to Eureka that they really need to know about the program, this and Pathway to Payday, because it's really hard here as far as finding a job, but if you go through the program and you follow the steps and you stick to it and you really have that goal and that vision to do it, that the program helps, and as long as you stick with it, and that's what you want to do, that eventually you'll get to where you want to be. I'm looking forward to now to just keep moving forward and just, you know, saying, like I said, the Uplift program makes me feel... Made me feel like, you know, I was a citizen, and so I can just keep moving on and just keep being, you know, just... It was a change of life for me, too. It made me change and keep going on. It gave me more self-esteem.
Because we're a faith-based organization, I can say it is an answer to prayer. Because we do as much as we can with what we have as emergency services, but I don't have the staff to bring people in for job trainings and stuff like that. So to have Uplift come here with our group of people is absolutely phenomenal. I am so looking forward to seeing our clients, our guests, be able to take the next step in life. What was really, really cool was a couple of weeks ago, there was a cleanup, and I had known that Uplift was coming in, and I saw a group of our people leave. And so then I was actually scheduled to be at the site for anybody that might be displaced for services, so I showed up there. Well, not one crew, but two crews. I think two crews from the Eureka Rescue Mission showed up of our people, and they were so happy. When they got done, they said they were... It made them feel so good that they earned something, and they could look... Take a step back and take a look at what they did. So that was such a reward for them, and I love seeing that in their lives. It was just awesome.
The Job Skills Training Program provides participants with opportunities to gain valuable skills that can help them boost resumes and enable them to obtain future employment.
With the Job Skills Training Program, all of here is thank yous. You're doing an awesome job. Thanks for beautifying our town. You learn how to take these skills of communicating with the public and communicating with each other and doing the job and showing up on time. So I feel like that carries on to the professional life and getting a job in the future. I think all those characteristics could help out.
The city of Eureka and Mercer Fraser have partnered to offer a local glass recycling program to divert materials from the waste stream and use the material as road base. Uplift participants collect, sort, and deliver materials to Mercer Fraser's aggregate yard. Participants are paired and meet weekly with a volunteer co-pilot who provides guidance and help with obtaining goals.
So milestones are basically how we gauge success in Uplift Eureka. I think there are seven milestones in Level 1, which include signing up for CalFresh benefits, getting a social security card, a birth certificate, driver's license, or photo ID, whatever documentation one might need for employment. Level 2 includes employment-type milestones, which would be a resume, applying for jobs. And Level 3 is permanent housing. The co-pilots and participants are paired in a one-on-one setting. They meet once a week at the same time, same place, and it's just the two of them. On the very first meeting, I tend to basically help break the ice, make introductions. We sort of get to know one another, and then I also go through the resource guide and explain that if the participant needs any help with any of the resources, they are always welcome to ask their co-pilot.
Well, I think being a co-pilot is a great honor, and it also does feel like a great service. So I think as a co-pilot, you get as much or maybe even more than you give. It's great to be able to connect with people who are not in your normal, day-to-day experience. The Uplift program is a really great idea. We have a huge homeless problem in our area, and there's a lot of hostility that goes along with that that is largely unhelpful. It's unhelpful for us as community members to carry around that hostility, and it's unhelpful for the participants to be the recipients of the hostility. It doesn't help them move any faster to get on their feet. I think one of the most pertinent and powerful things that I heard from my participants were when they were helping with the cleanup, how it was really impactful for them to be seen as doing something useful for our community, and how they loved that opportunity to pick up trash and to take care of, you know, needles and things that were there that could be harmful to children or other community members, and how it felt so good to participate in that way, and that people would roll their windows down in their car and say, "Hey, thank you. Thanks for what you're doing." Or the police officers, you know, giving them the thumbs up, and, you know, just to build those positive experiences for them of being seen as someone of value that's doing something valuable, as opposed to something that is just, you know, unvaluable or a castaway or something that is the subject of scorn, was really... Was powerful for me to witness and for them to experience. So I think that's one of the most powerful pieces for me.
Uplift Eureka, in partnership with the police department, are coordinating outreach efforts and are currently developing a diversion program.
You know, so the HO workers or homeless outreach workers are another key component with the city's strategy to engage in outreach with the homeless. Again, we're recognizing that law enforcement has its place, its enforcement coupled with effective services that really makes the whole thing work. And there needs to be that balance between compassion and accountability for behavior. And so the HO workers are gonna bring a new element to the city's response to homelessness in our community and really provide a resource that helps fill some of the gaps in the system. It doesn't supplement or supplant, I should say. It doesn't supplant the partnership that we have with the Department of Health and Human Services and their workers. This just augments the efforts of the city and the county and the Eureka Police Department, again, to outreach to and engage the homeless in a more constructive, productive way that goes beyond just holding someone accountable behavior, but actually looks at the underlying causes and how can we help you fix those, address those, and eventually get out of homelessness and into stability in your life. We're really excited at the Eureka Police Department to partner with the Uplift Eureka program to bring a diversion program to our homeless services. Program to bring a diversion program to our homeless services and outreach as also a component of the enforcement and accountability side of things. And so when we do happen to encounter an individual that's committed a minor infraction or violation, could be littering, could be obstructing the sidewalk, or some kind of other issue, we have the opportunity to give them the chance voluntarily to participate in this new program we call Law Enforcement-Assisted Alternative Diversion Program, or LEED. And the idea, again, is in lieu of a citation or more traditional enforcement, they can voluntarily agree to participate in the diversion program. They'll make a connection with the Uplift Program and a coordinator there who'll take them through kind of an assessment, and then come up with a plan where, by participating in the program, and that could involve job skills training, or participating in some kind of work program, or just participating in services to, to take the steps to better their lives and kind of work towards stable housing and treatment for any issues that they might have, like mental health or addiction. And then if they successfully complete that program, they will not have to pay the fines associated with the citation and have that dismissed with no criminal record at all. And again, no, no fines stacked up. And so it's really exciting to see how that program works. And we're happy to bring you to Eureka.
And I also wanted to mention, now that we're doing the, when we first started Pathway to Payday, we did it once a year, and we had a lot of success with that. And there is such a need in this community, we've decided to do these every other month now. And since, in the last ten months, we have found, we've, we've placed almost ninety folks in, in, with employers, and, and almost ninety people have received jobs through Pathway to Payday. This is something that we're definitely going to continue. The next Pathway to Payday is two weeks away, so it starts October fourteenth. And this is a program that we really do want to, to reach out. And so I know a few of you have, have participated before, but definitely check your, your inboxes. You're all going to be receiving invitations to, to partake in this next one. And, and also other staff, city staff in different departments too. We really want to, to kind of, kind of share this out and, and give the opportunity to other staff to, to partake in this, in this wonderful program. And yeah, so that the presentation is over, and staff is available for questions.
Do you have questions? Anybody have anything to, to say? I don't do public comment on this, right? Because it's just a report. So.
I guess I do have a question. How much heat funding were you able to obtain for the program?
So we were able to, I believe it was $225,000.
Okay, okay. I'm sure that we saw that at some point, but it's helpful to make the connection to what program that's really going to. And if sometimes we see lists of grants that we're receiving, and we know they're wonderful, but to, to make that connection to this presentation is really helpful.
Yeah, and that, that goes for quite a few different things. The Housing Assistance Funds, there's a couple of staff positions, and then also, yeah, all of this, everything that we need to, to help provide supportive services to our participants.
Great, thank you. All right. Councilman Allison?
I'd just like to thank the Community Services Department and everyone involved in the, in the Uplift and Cape program. I think you guys are so creative and so passionate, and you're really helping issues in our community. And obviously, so many members who have been in this program have been very fortunate that something like that exists here. And so I just want to say thank you. You guys are all doing very important work and don't ever stop.
Okay, you want to try? Councilmember Gal?
Geez, I just want to say thank you too. You know, people do get better. People do change. Connection is key in our commu-, in, in life. Connection is key. And I just so appreciate how you guys are willing to meet people where they're at and make those positive changes for people. Sorry, it just really moves me. But you know, the thing is, is because I've known people that have gone through the program that have completely different lives right now, because somebody cared enough to look them in the face and say hello and treat them like a human being. And what a gift that is. And our community is rich in people like that. And I just want you to know how much I appreciate it.
Councilman Mesner?
We can't not say something. Yeah, we really appreciate all that you guys are doing. And thank you for, to all of your department, and the ones that aren't here as well, for the work you guys are doing. It's really important. And we thank you for stepping up when even that idea was brought to you, stepping up and saying, yeah, we can do this, and putting your hard work into it, and making it happen, and seeing real results too, real results. You're crying back there too, Donna. And we know that relationship is the breakdown. I mean, that is where the breakdown happens for homelessness, for mental health, and for addiction issues. And so it is a really important thing that we build those relationships back. It's one of the keys to real change. So thank you for all the work you guys are doing.
Councilman Castellano?
I thought, oh, I thought I saw your, your fingers before. No?
Thanks. Y'all are, y'all are great.
Sorry, I thought I saw a little hand up.
Anyways, congratulations again on your role. I've been watching you through, do Pathway to Payday for a while. And it's really, it's a, it's great to meet the participants, and, and your unending enthusiasm for the work, I think, helps. I think that you, that that just brightens up the room when people are going through some pretty hard stuff, but they, you're like the light. And everybody, and that whole program is, is the light. And then people can see a path and a way to go. So thank you so much for the work you do. All right. And now is a time for public comment. So those who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda, we have a sign-up cards here. It looks like we have a few. You'll have three minutes to speak. And the public will, can, we cannot respond to you because of Brown Act. So the first speaker is Kelly Pifferini, and Cornelius Lowenstein is also signed up right after him.
Hello, y'all. How you doing? My name's Kelly Pifferini. I'm a representative, the DP Voice in the Eureka City community. Today, I'm going to talk about panhandling. There are many issues surrounding panhandling in Eureka, some of which can be solved and others that may never be solved. Here are the main problems with panhandling. One, since the last changes of the ordinance, your EPD has improperly enforced the new amendments. They never informed the order, in order to violate the new amendments, a person should have to be, one, asking for specifically values, and, two, standing at least in less than the specific specified distance. Also that because nobody is a perfect judge of distance, that officers would be required to measure the distance at which a panhandler is standing at the time in question. Instead, police have used the color of the law against the panhandlers in all areas of Eureka, giving legal and illegal sign flyers citations, making them leave whatever area they were operating in, causing unconstitutional legal repercussions and false assumptions to the community or complaint callers that panhandling must have been illegal in a spot where the police officer wouldn't have made a move. Two, the entire community has been misled by not clearly telling them that panhandling is a protected right, and that it is, and can never be made completely illegal, and that the intentions of the new ordinance was, in amendments, were to stop aggressive and intrusive types of soliciting, also to address the possible traffic safety hazard. Never was it intended for, to get rid of the eyesore of panhandlers, and never was it to benefit the business community. Three, traffic safety was the main concern in challenging the ordinance, or in changing the ordinance to begin with. But it now seems to have only been an excuse to stop the non-aggressive type of panhandlers in the prime areas of Eureka. Council's hands would have been tied on the subject of if they didn't have the public safety concern, and could have never been able to place restrictions on time, place, and manner that would have regulated the freedoms of speech. In the aftermath, it has become apparently apparent that there was no legitimate concern of public safety because, because council included an exemption for sign flyers that are part of the, I can't read my own writing, allowing party-city sign flyers to operate in the restricted areas, purposely waving their signs, trying to distract drivers as they pass by, also allowing children to scream and yell at, at traffic to sell Girl Scout cookies. Am I time up?
Yeah, it is.
Sorry.
That's okay. You did fine.
Do we have, is Cornelius next, or do we, would you like to take your order, or do you want, or you want to let him go? All right.
Ready?
Yes.
Mike Caris Eureka. It was a pretty good film. It looks like it was well-done. But there's other, other ways that we can clean up Eureka and make a better place for tourism and all that, which a lot of tourists would stay away because they don't like it anymore. One is affordable housing. They keep talking about affordable housing. What's affordable housing? Free? Okay, here's the deal. Where the Pearson Mall is, at one time, they tore all the affordable housing down there. That's all gone, history. The other affordable housing can be achieved by the city and the county getting together with the state of California and the government by turning over military barracks that have been sitting, not being used at all. And they want to talk about affordable housing. You can ship the homeless to these nice barracks and housing where they can live. All they got to do is maintain them and keep them up. That's affordable housing. Doesn't cost them a dime, except to clean the barracks and make sure they're squared away. Moffett Field is one place, Alameda, I mean, there's many through California that have been closed. They're just sitting there idle, that our taxpayer paid for these barracks and these housing. And why don't we start thinking about that and helping these homeless people out with some kind of affordable housing? And this would be great. What happens if the Coast Guard station here closed down, and they went someplace else? All those abandoned houses could be used for affordable housing for the homeless people. So the point I'm getting at is, we need to, we need to do something better than what we're doing. This was pretty good, but we still need to do something better to clean up the town. Because I've had German terrorists come here from Germany, and they just shake their heads when they see some of this stuff. It's terrible. You don't see this in Germany as much as you do here. Shopping carts being stolen, and the cities, and the city picks them up, takes them back, whatever. But they need to come up with better ways to secure shopping carts. In Germany, they change the carts together, and you got to have a special coin to get a shopping cart. And then you take it to the store, do your shopping, and then the clerk looks at the number on the shopping cart, puts it down there. And if it becomes missing, they find it, they send you a big fine in the mail. It's like stolen property. So we need, we need to think about what we can do with the homeless. We can clean up Eureka in probably two or three days, as long as we can find the military housing that's being, not being used. Fort Lewis opened in sixty-eight, and they had to replace one million sheets of glass for Vietnam service. So why can't we think something like outside the box to help these people? Give them a place to live, a place to sleep, in safety. And these places are open. I saw one down in Sacramento, beautifully kept, maintained. And that's all we can do to help some of the homeless people around here. Just find them a nice place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dear citizens, city council, since the city seal is the same as the great seal of the state of California, Eureka, now, once found, now seemingly lost in crime, needles, and feces, an open-air asylum without any wardens is a true trendsetter. A recent study of the UC Berkeley found that fifty percent of all registered voters of California want to leave. Things are coming to a boil in places like Skid Row and the Mission District in San Francisco, and when it spills over, and seventeen federal agencies will clean up down there, then Katie bar the door, as you say in American. Fifty percent of all registered voters in California, and they want to leave due to the issues that drive good folks and their businesses, families, and money away, which leaves a vague vacuum behind, filled by those that vandalize, pillage, loot, set things on fire in and all over Old Town and downtown Eureka. Eureka has become synonymous with what plagues the state. Eureka could be a lighthouse, a beacon, an example on how to take honest self-inventory, address, acknowledge the issues, and come up with trailblazing ways to combat the crime wave that comes with the opioid epidemic and the homeless crisis. Uplift is a great example and very encouraging. I'm stoked and pleased to see where things are going. We had other attempts that went nowhere. When the Tenderloin in Skid Row will be, will get emptied out, the floodgates of hell will open if we don't prevent it via programs and policing that put Eureka first in order to make Eureka safe again. You went for the lowest-hanging fruits of the, of the grand money tree. Sugar coated constantly, and now the last industries left here are the industries of misery. No amount of grand money can make up for the blight and flight, the public spending and lost revenues that come with the hopeless, the homeless crisis, the opioid epidemic, the needles, the decay, the loss of tourism, businesses, families, and taxpayers.
I just had a couple of ideas I wanted to bring forth. One is pretty simple and straightforward. We could use some more like dog poop cans around town. I, like even in shopping centers and such, because I know that a lot of the shopping centers and businesses are restricting trash can access for, because of homeless people getting in them and throwing things everywhere. So they're just locking them or taking them in. And there's nowhere to put the dog poop, and nobody wants to pick up the dog poop and like take it in their car. It's not happening. Okay. And then there's, I noticed down at Sequoia Park, the pond was dry for the first time ever, and it looked like there was some sort of drainage going on. And I was a little concerned about ocean level rise with the depleting jetty and things like this. And I learned in college that the only ocean level rise is specifically contributed to, due to continental water. All the ocean ice is already displacing the water as it's melting. So keeping continental water on the continent could reduce ocean level rise, which also brings me to another issue that could help reduce ocean level rise is maybe having some sort of ordinance in a process to catch the water, like rain water catchment systems on future buildings. That could be like some sort of potential code in the future, something to think about, at least maybe public buildings and things to water landscaping. And then also, really important, is the notion of reducing corporations in the city of Eureka. Like maybe we could put some sort of like percentage of non-local corporations, like a cap on them. Like if somebody builds a local corporation, awesome, cool, good for them. Like let them do their thing. But like fast food chains and these other like mega corporations are really bad for the environment. And it'd be cool to put a cap on them and have a stronger local economy in order to, you know, keep us as a stronger player in the macro economy. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
I figured that out. I'm Bonnie. I live right next door to the library. And I did say this before, I'm pleased with what you guys have been doing with the park. It was a long time in coming. But there's still the issue of lighting on the street. I noticed around the Carson Mansion, it is lit up like Christmas. And then as soon as you pass the Carson Mansion, there's like a light every once in a while. And so you're still going to attract the element there. As soon as the library, library closes, it opens up a whole other world. And just to, I've lived all over California, but I noticed in Berkeley where they were concerned about travel, you know, trever, what do you call it, trafficking going through residential neighborhoods, is they put up islands in the streets, so they were no longer through streets. It would be inconvenience for me, but if it stops the drug dealers and from circling, 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 you see the same three or four cars as soon as the library closes, just circling the block. And that's pretty disturbing. They're not near, there to get a book. They're not looking for it. They're not near, there to get a book, they're not looking for anything. They're just looking, you know, to pick up anything and, you know, I, I came here to get away from all of that crap in Oakland, so. Um, also, I think Cornelius is saying that the bathrooms down in Old Town were closed. I'm not really sure why, but I just thought I would mention it, cause I forget what he told me. Oh, yeah, cause I guess the pipes were clogged with a whole bunch of stuff. So anyway, just consider the lighting for that area uh at the corner of Third and O Street. I still live there, I don't project myself moving anytime soon, cause live in a house now instead of an apartment. And yeah, just maybe putting up, because right now it's still a throughway, Third Street, they just circle around. And I can give you license plate numbers and who's driving them and everything like that. And if they just don't have that access to do that, there will still be an entrance and an exit, two exits, you know, to get into the library. But it just won't be a through street anymore, just to make it inconvenient for them to do that. Um, other than that, I can't wait till the park's finished and then I can invite company up here then. I thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and I will invite Philip Anderson to the podium for our public hearing. This is a public hearing about unmet transit needs. And Mr. Anderson is joining us from HCOG, for the Humboldt County Association of Governments. Bring it up just a little bit for you.
Thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. Um, Philip Johnson, actually, but thank you for the great introduction. And today I'm uh addressing the unmet needs process as a introduction to it. The unmet needs process involves public comment here at hearings such as this throughout the county. We also gather comments through uh the website for HCOG, H C A O G dot net and social media platforms. And what we're looking for is feedback about the transit system. How can we make it better? Where are the gaps in service? What sorts of troubles uh would you like to relay to us? And those comments are then analyzed by committee within HCOG. It's called the S S Tac Committee. And those comments are analyzed, they're looked at to, uh we in the committee determine if they are operational or if they are an unmet transit need. And if they are determined to be an unmet transit need, then the committee using defined definitions of uh what an unmet need is and reasonable to meet. The committee then makes a recommendation for the unmet need um to be reasonable to meet or not reasonable to meet. And substantial improvements to the transit system have come from this process throughout the years. Uh, the most recent improvement to the transit system from last year's cycle has produced a stop in uh Blue Lake on Saturdays that, that will be starting on the twelfth of October. The Willow Creek Bus, the H T A Willow Creek Bus currently drives by the city of uh Blue Lake without stopping. And the U T N unmet transit need finding was that it's reasonable for the bus to stop there on Saturday, since Blue Lake does not have service on Saturday. So true positive things come out from this process. Um, an update on the Tishnon routes that also came from this process a few years ago. Um, that route unfortunately was recently discontinued. And uh we learned a lesson from implementing routes through the Tishnon. We needed a, a better way to measure uh potential new transit routes or route realignments. So HCOG in partnership with uh the Blue Lake Renteria, um with a F T A planning grant um has, has purchased and set up a program called T Best, which helps us estimate potential ridership on um new planned routes. So hopefully that will help reduce the possibility of a um reoccurrence of implementing a route and then having it not meet the required fare box. In order for uh transit routes to be sustainable financially, they need to have at least ten percent um financial recovery in order for the route to continue um operating. Another update on uh previous finding, last year we had the, uh the city of Eureka had a finding for a stop in south, southwest Eureka. There's a large gap over by Pearson's and the new brewery where there's no transit stop. Currently, there's no funding available for Eureka because they spend all their funds on transit, however that need will be tabled. And hopefully eventually one day we'll have a uh, a stop down there. And I believe that opens it up to the uh hearing. So at this point in time, um, this will be an opportunity for the public to come up if you have any comments on to the transit system. No matter how minor or major, feel free to come up here and comment. If you uh, if anybody doesn't want to come up here today or feels too shy, that's fine, or anybody watching on the television today. You can submit your comments on uh the HCOG website, you can call us. And there's also a link that I'll share here, it's G O O dot G L forward slash capital L H U lowercase X two lowercase Y. That's L H U, those are capital and then lowercase X, number two, lowercase Y. That's the form where you can directly submit the comment. And um again, any comment, um we would welcome here. And they then go to the S S Tac Committee and ultimately to the HCOG Board for um, for approval. And thank you.
Before I open it up to public comment, does anybody here have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Alright, then at this time we'll open it up to public comment. Does anybody have anything that they would like to share about unmet? Come on in.
I know the bus used to stop in Lolita, I don't think it does anymore. That could probably be fixed. I know I've keep telling people, apply for a job at Bear River and they're like, there's no bus that goes there, so putting that out there.
Thank you very much. I think that's what he's looking for. Anybody else have any comments?
I'm Holly Klingel, I live in Eureka, Eureka High nineteen sixty, Humboldt nineteen sixty-six. Um, I wanna thank Humboldt Transit Authority for the free transportation they provided the month of July. As most of you all know, people back there might not know. I have a forty-eight-year-old gravely disabled daughter who has chosen to live on the street. And just, she was in jail for six days last week, she's out again. And I'm back on the merry-go-round. Today I went into the H T A office and purchased two twenty-dollar bus passes. And the lovely lady who was at the desk was sympathetic, empathetic and absolutely wonderful. We are doing a good job here in meeting the needs of those who for whatever reason are no longer able to help themselves. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I was thinking just because Humboldt is kind of a smaller rural area and you had mentioned that one of the stops in Eureka isn't being made anymore, but hypothetically, if the funds become available, it could be made. So I was wondering if we're maybe an appropriate area for microtransit, which is more on-demand transit? And would allow people to be able to contact the transit authority and actually get delivery when, as needed? Which seems, I don't know, from riding the bus, sometimes you wait forever for a bus to get there and then you have like a two and a half hour ride. And I know for my work, also I work on Jacob's Avenue and I'd love to see a bus stop there, cause for my work, I definitely have to drive. And I live kind of fairly close, so it'd be nice to be able to take a bus there. So that spot I'd like to see on there, but I also like the idea of microtransit and maybe even getting E V vehicles as part of that. I know that's kind of a bigger project, but thought I'd throw it out there.
Thank you. Any other?
Hi, um, so I just have one thing. Uh, I work with Uplift Eureka, which we also do Pathway to Payday. And we, Sun Valley Farms is at every pathway to payday that I'm aware of. And they're always hiring for several, several positions, but the problem is, is that our participants mostly don't have vehicles. And it's, it's a burden for them to get out there. Um, there is a stop that's nearby, it would require a two hour, a two mile walk. Um, but it doesn't go early enough for when the shifts start. Apparently, uh, I think shifts start at maybe seven or six-thirty in the morning. Um, and from my experience, most of Humboldt doesn't get started that early. So, um, but otherwise our participants use your system a lot, so thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Alright, seeing none, we'll close this public hearing and continue to contact. Oh, I'll bring it back for comments here.
So I just wanted to let folks know, um, if you didn't know, I'm the Humboldt Transit Authority representative for Eureka. So um even outside of the unmet transit, transit needs process, which is of course very important. If you have concerns or questions about transit, feel free to reach out to me. Um, we are scheduled to talk about the concept of microtransit and alternatives to kind of our existing transit system um in the near future and um, and other, you know, route recommendations or other recommendations are sometimes made when they come up from the community, even if they're outside the unmet transit needs process. Um, again, that's a really important time to bring forward uh concerns. And if you had a concern and are watching at home and weren't able to write down that link, um also feel free to email me. Um, my email address is on the city's website or call me and um relay your concerns to me. I'd be happy to bring it to the Humboldt Transit Authority Board, who will also have one of these hearings um in, at our upcoming meetings. So um, just wanted to reach out or let folks know that they can reach out, I should say. And um, we are definitely interested in um exploring new alternatives where they're feasible. And um, I did get a comment from a community member recently, um, that unfortunately was made just sort of um out at a social event and passing. So I wasn't able to get their contact information to document this, but um they felt it was really important to tell me that um a lot of bus stations um throughout the community, um both in Eureka and outside of Eureka, lack seats. And they would like to see some kind of um seat. And so we discussed this, I um, this type of seat that I saw when I was traveling in Europe, where it's really just affixed to the pole. I mean, it's not very complicated, you may have seen them in the States somewhere. Um, but they were really nicely designed seats that are fixed to a pole. Um, and so I wanted to note that that was uh relayed to me, knowing that I am the H T A representative um by someone. Granted, it was at a bar, but uh, I still think it counts. So I'm saying it now, so that we remember um for the unmet transit needs process, thanks.
Well, if we're gonna talk about conversations that we had with other folks too, I was talking to the president of C R the other day, who mentioned that a lot of their classes start before bus service as well. So when you were talking about Sun Valley, it reminded me of that. And talking to the colleges and universities about when their actual schedule starts, so kids can get there on time. Any other comments? Oh, Councilman Castellano.
Um, I, I think the comment I hear most out in the community is that um for people who have busy work schedules and things like that, that the buses don't run frequently enough um for them to be able to get from like one place to another.
Alright, with that, you have some stuff to work on. And uh we'll continue to send you ideas as we hear them. How long are you gonna be accepting this?
The coming period will officially close on November fifteenth. Any comment received after that will be tabled for the following Tuesday.
Okay, so he said November fifteenth, so we wanna get stuff to him by then. Thank you very much.
Mayor, did you note that the uh, the recommendation was to direct staff to forward a transcript of the comments to uh HCOG for inclusion in the twenty nineteen twenty unmet needs report of findings?
I did note, not note that, so I will now direct staff to forward that transcript of comments to you guys officially. So you were taking notes, but you will also get our notes. We can compare them. Alright. And now we will move on to our consent calendar. Um, do we have, I haven't heard of any items to remove from the consent calendar. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Alrighty, all in favor?
Unanimous guess vote, motion carries.
Excellent. Now we will move on to ordinances and resolutions. Item C one, which is the facade improvement and SEPTED grant. Thank you Director Malar. Or Finance Director Malar, interim Development Services Director Malar.
Uh, good evening, mayor and city council. I'm here to introduce the facade improvement rebate program. Um, this was a program that was created by staff, including Melinda Peterson in housing. Uh, Sherry McBride, Swan Asbury and Kristen Raymond all participated in creating this program. We also worked with E P D as well as the Henderson Center Merchant Group and the Chamber of Commerce to get ideas and feedback on the program. Um, if we're gonna run it initially as a pilot, we're gonna s- simply test it out. And if it's successful or if areas of this program are successful, we will try to uh get more funding in the future. Um, so the objective, there's two obje- objectives for this program. The first one is to improve the appearance of commercial buildings through, through the facade incentive. And then the second is to promote business security through the use of SEPTED. And what SEPTED is, for the people that don't know, it's a crime prevention through environmental design. And I realize that I made an error on this slide, so. Um, but SEPTED uh is essentially design principles and improvements uh used to discourage crime and to promote building security. So this was intentional. Uh, we're trying to tell the business community that we would like uh you to beautify your building, but we'd also wanna offer you ways to protect your asset. Um, so what we're offering, um, are rebates in specific areas. This includes the one oh one corridor, uh, the Eureka Main Street boundary, as well as the Henderson Center boundary. Uh, the rebate levels are a um twenty-five percent rebate on improvements up to ten thousand dollars for, for facade improvements. And then for SEPTED, uh, we will cover a hundred percent of the cost up to twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, there is a, an approval process um and design standards. So the fa- facade improvements must enhance the appearance of the front of the building or any entrance, entrance into the building. And applicants must be approved prior to uh doing the, the improvement. Uh, and there's a lot more information in the brochure, just FYI. Um, so there are guidelines, you still have to follow codes and permits and rules. Um, we have the right to inspect the work. Um, and it has to be done by a qualified contractor or somebody that specializes in that type of work. Uh, what's eligible? Um, painting, uh, any type of decorations for the facade, signage, uh canopies, uh screening on the roof, uh or landscaping that works with the, the image of the building. Also, we're incorporating dumpster security. So if a business wants to enclose their dumpster, so it's not just sitting out there in an alley, that is also eligible. Um, so now on our SEPTED portion, uh, this was a nice quote from uh Chief Watson. Um, you know, part of this is to support our police department. Uh, they get a lot of calls for service around things that can be uh avoided through these improvements. So what types of SEPTED projects can you do? Uh, you can add security systems. Uh, you can add a aftermarket window treatment, which is a film that goes on uh the window to help it from shattering. Um, exterior lighting, landscaping, uh shrouding devices. Um, exterior lighting, landscaping, uh, shrouding devices for ladders, um, securing access points and alarming access points. Um, there are exclusions. Uh, it can't be an interior improvement. Uh, you cannot purchase inventory with these funds, um, and so forth. And again, there, there is an approval process, so we should be able to weed out these types of items. So, here's an overview of the process. You start with the application. We go, we look at the site or the parcel, uh, we go over your plans. Uh, you give us information about the contract and who the contractor is. Um, and then we hold you to a timeline. So, after we approve you, you have about ten days, I believe, to go to the building department to get your plans looked at. Um, once the work is done, we will come out and inspect. And at that point, we will provide compensation for your projects. Um, and then you will have to maintain this improvement for a course of five years, um, after it's complete. Um, it's, we're trying to make this very simple to be appealing to the business community. So, but we're open to suggestions and any alternative ideas. So, thank you.
Councilman Castellano?
Um, just a couple of quick questions. Let's see. Is this, um, competitive in that there's, there's kind of a due date for applications? Or is it first come, first served process?
Uh, it'll be a first come, first served. Yes.
And then, um, on section thirteen, the application section, you, there's mention of a pre-application committee meeting. Is that more of like a one-on-one thing with applicants? Or is there going to be some sort of meeting for a collection of applicants?
Uh, it'll be a one-on-one. Uh, it'll be with one city staff from Economic Development and, uh, the SEPTED, uh, or somebody from EPD to look at the SEPTED and stuff.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Councilman Royal?
So, in thinking about, um, some of the lighting that was, um, considered for alleys in Eureka or in Old Town, or, you know, another Henderson Center Merchants Association has been interested in more lighting, but more as a district, would it be, um, something that a, like a group of businesses could do together and seek reimbursement for? Or is it really just an individual property owner making improvements to their specific property?
Um, it was designed for the individual.
Okay.
But going, or working with the Henderson Center Merchant Group, we learned about the interest into, uh, more of a communal project. And I'm very open to that idea. And if they want to, people want to come forth with projects like that, I'm, I'm open to working with them.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, um, just another, I know, it makes sense to not, um, allow for interior improvements, but I was just thinking, maybe this is getting a little too into the weeds. But when I, I took that SEPTED class, one of the things that I thought about a lot was visibility from inside buildings to the outside. Um, and that's something that really has been shown to deter crime as well as make places look more inviting. And, um, you know, everyone feels better when you can kind of see what's going on around you. And, um, the one kind of thing that I've started to notice around town is about, um, like window treatments and windows being covered with like advertising information or just other, like just windows being covered with stuff so that even if there is a window there, you can't really see through it. So, I wondered if, um, that idea of like no interior improvements could, uh, would be a little bit flexible when it comes to windows? Like if people need to change their window treatments so that, um, you can see inside of a business or, um, or whatnot, could, would that be, um, considered?
Um, can you give me an example of?
Yes, okay, yes, yes, yes. I'm trying to think. Um, well, I guess this is like a film on the outside. It, it's probably minutia. It's like whether it's on the outside or the inside of the window. I know a lot of businesses put advertising on the windows, for example. So, you can't ever like see in or out. And it was like an example given in the SEPTED class, which is why I started noticing it, um, that lots of people cover all their windows with like advertising, um, you know, like a film covering or something on the outside that's mounted to the windows. Um, so, changing, um, you know, the, changing the transparency is really important, but people are, may not be aware of that. Um, and, you know, if that's something that's occurring on the inside, um, I would hope that this program would allow them to make that change because it has an impact on the outside of the building. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think I understand.
Okay. Does that sound like an area where we can be flexible or?
Yeah, I'm really open to anything. I kind of just want to dip my toes in the water and see, you know, what, you know, what there's demand for. Because I did, uh, take a lot of the content from Pismo Beach. And then I called them and asked them how their program was going. And they said it wasn't, you know, very fruitful. So, I, that's kind of why I want to start with a pilot program, just to see what people really want.
Yeah.
So, I'm open to change.
Okay, all right, yeah. As I was saying it, I was thinking this is like a little bit too specific of a question. So, if I talk to a business that seems to have a problem with visibility on their windows, and I'm not sure how it would apply, I'll, I'll make sure to connect them with you.
Councilman Castellano?
Um, one more quick question. You said it's a pilot program. Um, do you have plans for how it might be continued after this initial period, or will that be reassessed?
Uh, I have some ideas. Um, I'm hoping to take the best pieces from it, to use that to promote it and to try to get outside funders, essentially. And I have some ideas, but I don't want to say it out loud, so.
Councilman Messner, did you have something?
So, um, a couple of things. So, you're, realistically, it's maybe ten businesses that will benefit from this?
I mean, it could be.
If it's, well, if it's up to twenty-five hundred, twenty-five percent of 10,000, that means up to 10, right?
So, it could be essentially three facade improvements or 10 SEPTED improvements. Um, yeah, that's part of the, kind of seeing what the demand is.
Process, okay. Um, and then the other piece is the communication piece. Um, like what Councilmember Royal was talking about. Um, is, is there any intent on getting more SEPTED information into the community, particularly into businesses, so that they could understand some of those specific things? Like, for instance, taking things off the windows and some of those. Is there anything that we're thinking in regard to that to help people understand? Would that be a part of this process, is helping them understand better?
I, I think through the marketing of this, we would like to kind of, uh, use those principles of SEPTED to use that as content, to go through social media. Um, but we are interested in an educational campaign. Um, and working with Eddie Alexander, who helped us do this brochure. Um, so, yeah, uh, this can be both a way to get people to, um, look at using SEPTED. And then, yeah. So, I, I hope to create something around that to promote the program, but also the SEPTED principles.
Okay, yeah. So, I think it'd be a great advantage to take advantage of this as an opportunity to communicate.
Right, yeah.
And educate. So, thank you.
Do you have any questions over here? Do we have any, um, comments from the audience on this?
I just had a quick question for you. Um, with the SEPTED principles, do they go through kind of like, uh, the slides were kind of fast and I, I missed it. I thought I saw something about plants being okay. And I know they've done studies and neighborhoods, including neighborhoods with businesses that have trees tend to have lower crime rates. So, I'm wondering if trees are going to be kind of a part of this process, possibly tree planting.
So, you're not supposed to try, you can just make comments.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Sorry for the question. But, okay, so just to throw it out there, I think trees would be a lovely part of the process.
But perhaps somebody from here would be interested in asking about trees. Now that, now that we're all thinking about it. Does anybody have any other comments about this?
Going off the tree thing, specifically redwood trees, because you want to kind of support the local forest. And I know redwood trees can be a schematic, but maybe some sort of localized trees, not like magnolias, which are from the south of the country and don't support our weather patterns. And then also, I think like motion lighting is good. It could also reduce, uh, crime because at night, they're going to come on. And so, everybody's going to know somebody's there. And, uh, green, uh, psychology has found, uh, that green spaces do decrease crime and increase happiness and health. Putting that out there.
Thank you very much. Ooh.
I don't know if I'm allowed to come up here, but I'll walk up anyways because I got backup in the back.
If I have anything to say, I'm going to say, yeah.
Uh, I'll just say that we have done previous trainings on, um, methods that businesses and property owners can use to better secure their premises. Uh, Crime Free Business Presentation was an all-day training that we did a couple of years ago. So, the police department could, if there was sufficient interest amongst our local shopkeepers and businesses, probably put on a one-day SEPTED training course for businesses if, uh, we were to be asked to do so and there was sufficient community interest in said training.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any other public comment? Oh, okay, I, can we comment twice? Sorry. Okay, seeing none. I'll bring it back for our comments here. Councilmember Royal?
So, Director Millar, I really appreciate how you are not looking at me right now. But I really appreciate how you're constantly looking outside the box to find positive ideas to move our city forward and beautify it. So, with that, um, being said, I, um, would like to make a motion. You can make your comments after, but I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council implementing the facade improvement rebate and crime prevention through environmental design SEPTED grant program and approve an additional appropriation of funding in the amount of $25,000 from fiscal year 2019-2020 to fund this program.
Second up?
All righty, all in favor? Uh, discussion, sorry. We have a first, we have a, we had a concussion.
All right, um, it, not much. Um, just I wanted to point out that, uh, section seven, Program Emphasis, page nine, it, it looks like part of it got cut off. No big deal, but just might want to, yeah.
Thank you, Councilman Royal.
I'd like to express my interest in having, uh, the police department put together a training for businesses, um, to, um, help clarify principles for crime prevention through environmental, environmental design. And especially to highlight this so that people take advantage of it, um, while it's a pilot program that we're hoping to, um, I, I think, hoping to turn into a longer-term program. Um, and I also echo the, um, interest in seeing tree planting, um, included in the SEPTED principles. I know that there are very strict rules for how you have to trim your trees so that it doesn't, um, impact natural surveillance. Because one of the principles is natural surveillance, but another one is, um, has to do with, uh, you know, the, I do remember their, them covering, uh, tree planting as a traffic calming strategy. Um, and tree cover, um, in the case of limbed up trees as a beautification, um, as well as a traffic calming strategy. And that being, uh, a way of, of reducing, um, crimes related to speeding. So, uh, that is something I'd like to see included. Uh, it, right now, it's included just under, um, beautification, I think. Um, or facade improvement, but perhaps it could also be a SEPTED eligible improvement. This talks about landscaping to discourage sitting or sleeping, but not specifically landscaping to, um, have other positive impacts. Um, and I also wanted to clarify one thing, which is, it looks like this is, I mean, I understand that it's for commercial properties, but if a property is not currently being used as a business, um, but people want to keep it looking fresh and not, uh, attracting crime, are they still eligible?
If they're in the zones, yes.
Okay, great.
And Councilman Castellano?
I'd be happy to help with the talking with local businesses part. Um, and, and reaching out to folks in Old Town and things if that's useful.
Excellent. All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. And we are going to move on to item C2, which is an amendment to the animals ordinance. And we are going to go to our city attorney first. He has a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we, what you have before you is a bill, which means that this law will be introduced. Uh, and then, uh, at a later point in time, presumably, your next meeting will be considered for adoption, at which point it actually becomes law. Um, during the discussion of a bill, uh, you as the council can make changes to the bill and request that it be brought back with those changes in the adoption process. And we do have a couple of fairly minor editorial changes that I'd like to, uh, provide for your consideration at this point. Um, one is under section ninety-one point six oh five. Uh, throughout that section, there's a discussion of dangerous and vicious, uh, animals. Uh, and really, the vicious animal portion was broken out at, at some point in the drafting process to be ninety-one point six oh six, the next section. So, we want to subtract from six oh five, the reference to vicious dogs. Because that's, uh, not really dealt with in that section, but the next section. And then, another very minor point is on, in section ninety-one eight oh three, uh, point eight oh three, uh, we should correct the reference to the Food and Agriculture Code to state the, the California Food and Agriculture Code. Um, then, beyond that, uh, it's my understanding that Off- Officer Celeste Villarreal, uh, just attended a fairly detailed, uh, training session uh, in animal control. And she encountered, uh, a number of issues that, um, are arising in other jurisdictions. And it's her suggestion that this ordinance be amended to include, um, include some references and some prohibitions to, um, exotic animals and other, uh, animals that really don't belong in a city context. You know, like, uh, lynxes or bobcats or, you know, so people having wild and exotic animals. Um, and so, I, I'm hopeful that she is going to address that, uh, with you. Uh, or possibly Captain Stevens would address that. Um, I do have an email that was sent, uh, and I want to provide it to you because, um, I think that it would be the most efficient process if you went through her suggestions and, um, directed that the city attorney's office, working with staff, uh, basically amend the ordinance to bring it back at intro- at, uh, adoption time uh, in such a way that you could just do this in two steps and not have to add a third step or more. So, I'll pass it out now.
All right. And while you're doing that, I'll, um, invite, uh, is Officer Villarreal here? Or I see Captain Stevens? Come on up and make your presentation.
Well, good evening, council and mayor. Uh, this has been a long time coming. Our, uh, animal ordinance was last amended in the mid-sixties. And you can imagine how Eureka has changed over the last several decades. Issues we face now were never even thought of back then. And issues they faced then are not even relevant anymore. So, uh, our animal control officer, Celeste Villarreal, recognized some of the issues she was facing and she was trying to conduct enforcement, being challenged with different issues about the city that she was running into. And realized that there was a need for us to rewrite our animal ordinance, to bring it in line with state law and most common practice for animal control throughout the state of California. Uh, it's been in the process for over a year. You can imagine rewriting an entire ordinance and the research that has to go into this. We've been working closely with, uh, the city attorney. And, uh, she's put a lot of effort into this. Of course, the best laid plans, we want to bring it to you tonight as a final package. She goes to a training course and texts me and says, Captain, we've got a problem. Uh, we don't have anything in our ordinance that says somebody can't buy a tiger off Craigslist and have it as a pet in the city of Eureka. Uh, then we started talking about it, and that's what you'll find in the email. Uh, what she sent to me was her main recommendations. We don't want captive breed or wild-caught felines, hybrids, lynx, bobcats, those types of animals in our city. We don't want reptiles, amphibians, uh, arachnids, insects as pets. Uh, if we are. If we are, and there are some people who keep them, we would like to put a cap on the number they have so you can't have 100 tarantulas in your house because if we have to go deal with that, obviously that could be an issue for us. Prohibit venomous, poisonous reptiles, amphibians, arachnids, insects, except for the zoo. We'll have to put an exception for the zoo so it makes sure that's allowed within the ordinance. But we don't want poisonous snakes, other issues in the city, things that could get loose, cause damage or quality of life issues to our citizens. Also, we want to talk about pot-bellied pigs and miniature goats while the ordinance allows for those to be possessed or owned in the city with the license has been obtained. We don't want them in city parcels, like small city parcels. We were looking at trying to put in a half-acre lot size so that there are a few parcels in the city that are that large. If they wish to possess them, then that would be the proper location for them versus in an apartment complex on Summer Street. So that would just create issues with us for noise and quality of life issues for the people that live there. So those are kind of the, they're really not major changes. I think it's minor things we could write into a couple of sentences under most of the sections that are already in there. But other than that, we present the animal ordinance as it is to the council for review and questions.
See if we have questions. Councilmember Messner?
So in the document that's the last that you, Officer Villarreal, you just brought to us, there are two things mentioned. One is it specifies specifically a Vietnamese pot-bellied pig. Is that something we need to specify? Is there a difference?
Yeah, so most...
I don't know. I don't know my pigs.
So the accepted, like, pet pot-bellied pig is the Vietnamese pot-bellied pig. That's the full name of the breed or species. There are other questionable types of pigs that are smaller than your average, you know, farm swine, but generally speaking, they're not as easy to regulate because they vary in different sizes that they could grow to and it's just harder to, it's not like industry standard to the way that the Vietnamese pot-bellied pig is.
Okay, so that's something that you're asking us to specify within our ordinance is that it would be a Vietnamese pot-bellied pig versus what's there right now, which is just a pot-bellied pig?
So currently, our municipal code does not allow pigs, no swine, no pigs, no hogs. And it doesn't allow goats either. So one of the things that would be added would be allowing people to keep miniature goats and pot-bellied pigs as pets with certain restrictions.
Okay, it actually, on 91.904, it says, "No more, no person may harbor, keep, harbor, or maintain on any premises in the city more than one pot-bellied pig."
Are you looking at the old one? You said it was 91. which?
That's what we have in front of us.
Yeah, that's not in the old one. So the old one has, let's see.
So I'm asking, right now, what we're looking at adopting says what I just read to you. So do you want us to include, are you asking that we include Vietnamese in the, so it would say, "No person may keep, harbor, or maintain on any premises in the city more than one Vietnamese pot-bellied pig over the age of four weeks?"
Hmm, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I see your question now.
So that's what you're wanting us to change?
That's one of the changes, yeah.
The other thing is that you also on here mentioned ducks, but ducks is also mentioned in this as a, something that we would have. Wait, is that right? Other than, it says, "No person may keep, harbor, or maintain on any premises within the city, any poultry, other than chickens or ducks." So you're asking us to also remove ducks from that and only say chickens?
So one thing to keep in mind is...
Trying to clarify here.
I know, I'm sorry. So one thing to keep in mind is that this email was sent just a few hours before this meeting and this was just an example of something that I found in a city called Hamilton that had a very comprehensive section on prohibited animals. And so this isn't necessarily word-for-word what we want to adopt. I noticed on my way here that it doesn't have ducks in it, so we would have to, you know, work up something that would be actually part of the ordinance. But this is something that I just, while we were having the conversation, I found something that was similar to what we'd be looking at.
Got it. So you're not saying we need to remove ducks from our, from ours, but we, you're just, this is an example?
Exactly.
But you would suggest that Vietnamese pot-bellied pig part?
Yes.
Councilmember Allison?
Hi, Officer Villarreal, have a question for you. It's about nuisance animals. I've, I've gotten a few phone calls about things that arise and I know, I know you deal with it from time to time, but does this ordinance provide enough tools and fairness for the animal owner as well to, to deal with some of these issues that do occur from time to time?
So that was part of the inspiration for readdressing the municipal code. The current code doesn't have an awful lot of tools for us to use to address those nuisance issues. So this code is more specific regarding, say, barking dog complaints and the process to initiate a public nuisance hearing regarding animals. And there's also a section in there that we added in called irresponsible dog owner or I think it's irresponsible pet owner that addresses things that weren't covered in the previous code that become public nuisance issues, like allowing animals in season to run at large and other issues.
Good.
Councilmember Royal? Thank you so much, Officer Villarreal. This is very robust and yet I still have a couple of questions. So I, I got a question actually from a community member who was interested to know if we would consider adding that a dog shall not be de-barked. You know, people have removed or impact the vocal cords in some way, I don't really know what the surgery entails, to make the dog not bark loudly. And I mean, I guess one could argue that when you declaw a cat, it's also inhumane, but de-barking dogs is seen as pretty inhumane. But often when people do have a dog that won't stop barking, they do it as a way of keeping their dog. So I wondered if we wanted to, if you'd seen that in any of the research that you did and what your thoughts are on that?
It's not something that's come up here locally and I don't have any experience with other animal control officers saying that it's been an issue or anything that they've run into. I personally don't have a lot of experience with de-barking and I don't have a lot of technical knowledge of the process. So whether or not it's something that could be considered inhumane is, I can't speak to that. If we want to research it and then, you know, decide, I think that that's a valid question.
I'd be happy to do some research on that and bring it back for, although actually, no, I won't be here for our next reading of this, so perhaps, perhaps staff could look into it, just to see if there's, if that's something that... Oh, yeah. So I guess by the time we adopt it, I will be back. So never mind, I'll look into it. And I had a couple more for you briefly. So I see the, the item on kennels and catteries talks about having a license, but does that existing license have any kind of limits on the number of animals that can be in one facility together, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so we'd actually discussed that and decided instead of putting it in as an ordinance, it would be part of the policy for the license application. So you'd have to apply for a number of animals and then keep it to that number or fewer. And then if you want to increase your number, you would have to reapply and that would come down to zoning and other aspects of the, you know, the parcel and how the, you know, house or fence or whatever is put on there.
Okay. And then you sounded like there were some concerns about both exotics and unique pets and unique quantities of pets. Are those recommendations just going to come back in the next reading with, okay?
Yeah.
I certainly know, I know some weird pet people who have all kinds of this. Like when you said the 400s fighters in one house, I was like, oh my gosh, you know my friend. Who would say, "I have my animals very well taken care of in secure cages." So anyway, I'm not saying we shouldn't regulate it, but I, I hope the language will be around responsible pet ownership, but I know that that can be a really moving target. So I look forward to seeing what you come up with.
So I have a question about the pot-bellied pigs and miniature goats on a half-out, half-acre. Why that size specifically? I can see why you wouldn't have them in apartments, but they don't necessarily need that much.
They don't need, the, the issue that other people, animal control officers have run into with exotic and non-traditional animals is that a lot of times there isn't a lot of research done before they get them. There isn't a lot of, the, every animal and every species needs its own specific care. And while a pot-bellied pig doesn't necessarily need a large space to live in, it could conceivably live in a fairly small space, it has really extensive exercise requirements and requirements that are species-specific. It needs to be able to run around, it needs to be able to act in a manner that's correct for a pig to be able to act in. And you need a certain amount of space to do that and the same with goats. And we were hoping to keep the pot-bellied pigs and the goats to a space that's going to be able to support that type of animal and that type of behavior that those animals need to be able to exhibit to be happy and healthy.
So just in speaking to nuisance pets, so I had the question, I'm looking here. So with the nuisance pet, it looks like they have to be spayed within 30 days. Is that correct?
So current, so currently, the municipal code has three different levels. They have public nuisance, potentially dangerous, and vicious, and that's specific to dogs. It really closely mirrors state law. The three different levels currently don't require, they have, they have really specific definitions and there's usually, or there has to be a hearing to label a dog a potentially dangerous or public nuisance or vicious dog. Currently, there's no requirement that that animal be spayed or neutered. And so that would be the addition, would be if an animal is labeled potentially dangerous, public nuisance, or vicious, it would be required to be spayed or neutered within 30 days of that determination.
Okay, so that's 91.607. And so I understand the vicious in that, but what about the dog that's just running all over town? Is that the same requirement?
So currently, and I, I'm pretty sure the definition remains almost exactly the same word-for-word is if an animal is, if a dog is off its owner's property at large and impounded three times or if the owner receives three citations for the animal being at large, that is the definition of a public nuisance animal, one of the definitions of a public nuisance animal. So we would then initiate a hearing to determine the animal public nuisance and then they would be required to be spayed or neutered. In that way, we're addressing the animals that are problem animals, we're addressing the owners that maybe need a little bit of guidance on how to ensure that their animals don't become a nuisance as opposed to just putting out a flat spay-neuter ordinance.
And so how do you enforce that?
Currently, the way that it works is when we label an animal potentially dangerous, vicious, or public nuisance, they are required to have an inspection period where the animal control officer comes out and ensures that they're abiding by those restrictions. So that would be part of the process for that.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have any public comment on this issue?
Sorry, I feel like I'm commenting on everything. There was like a weird part of the ordinance and I was kind of wondering why it was there and I don't know if there's like technical reasons for it or if it's in compliance with state laws, but there was something about how you can't have a snake around your neck in public. And I was just kind of wondering why that wasn't, I don't, I grew up in Berkeley and there was a guy who walked around with a snake around his neck that was very harmless and didn't seem to cause issues. That seems like less of an ordinance and more of a case-by-case basis, but I don't know if it's more of a, it opens the door to bigger issues, but I'd throw that out there.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other comments? All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to comments from here. Councilmember Messner?
I also asked the question about snakes of our city manager. I've been in a lot of cities where that is, particularly up and down the coast, you know, often people will take pictures with it and things like that. So I was curious about the snake issue as well and what, what the problem is with that. And then I also wondered about the auction, let's see, sale, auction, animals as prizes or charitable fundraising events because I've seen that happen. I actually have a dog that we won at an auction, so I'm just curious why that's in there. And we love our dog very much, but why, you know, why, what, what's the purpose of that and why would you, why is that there?
So for the snakes, and I want to say that it includes reptiles, you need to reread it. As far as wearing them in public, it comes down to a public safety hazard. Not everyone, not all animals are socialized or trained to the same level. So having it just kind of be open season for people to be wearing various animals, particularly the non-traditional pets, is something that could be a potential safety hazard, particularly with the fact that animals like snakes and other reptiles and amphibians can be transmitters of salmonella. And so just somebody touching that animal and then going and eating a sandwich could cause the transmission of potentially dangerous illnesses.
And then the auction item?
Yeah, and then the auction items. So I know a few people that also own animals that they got at auction. My first goldfish was one that I won in a prize at a contest. The general movement right now is to move away from impulse buying or impulse adopting of animals. A big issue that we have with responsible animal ownership is owners not, having done the research and not really going into ownership with their eyes wide open. So they may not have the resources at home or the ability to provide the care necessary to be the responsible owner that we would hope that they would be. So discouraging people from just deciding, "Oh, that puppy's cute, I need it now," is going to help us, we hope, keep animals out of the shelter, keep animals from turning into future neglect issues.
So on that note, I would think that outside of grocery stores and stuff like that would be, actually create more of the problem of that than something like this where people are actually paying, you know, like a charitable fundraising event or something like that. I understand like maybe prizes, but you know, I just, I just think we need to think about that in particular, just looking at that. Because I mean, outside of grocery stores and picking up, oh, that cute kitten or that cute puppy is probably more likely to be that way than this, in my mind.
So that's currently against state law? You can't give or sell away, give away or sell an animal on a public thoroughfare or parking lot, sidewalk, that type of situation? You can't just give them away or sell them. It has to be, you have to either have a permit or, you know, there, it has to be a little bit more well-thought-out. So the auction is, is the one that kind of is we're moving towards and ultimately, it's something that we could absolutely address. I'm not married to, most of the stuff in there is suggestions or, you know, things that my, my recommendation. I know we're a big, you know, FFA, 4-H, you know, community and I'm not trying to change any of that. I just want to make sure that when people are going into animal ownership, they're doing it with both eyes wide open.
Councilmember Royal and then Castellano?
I think I definitely understand where you're coming from with that and I wonder if we might be able to, if you might be willing to check in with maybe some of the adoption organizations locally around what they're, if they have any suggestions to this language? Because it says that they'll have, they'll need to have a business license for the sale of animals on that property, but if it's something like a charitable event where they're doing like, you know, humble animal, animal rescue team is doing like a kitten-a-thon and people are coming to that knowing they're going to get kittens and like, I don't know. You know, it just does seem like this is specific to one property or to a charitable fund, and then it's like saying you can't do it at a charitable fundraiser and perhaps people would go to that with the intent of doing it as responsible pet owners. I just wonder if perhaps like the Humane Society or animal rescue organizations may be willing to weigh in on this with some of the language around best practices.
I think that's a really valid point.
Thanks. Councilman Castellano?
Let's see, I noticed, yeah, and it looks like you're going to address this, but just that reptiles aren't mentioned very much except once we get to live snakes. I personally would be, I would rather people be able to wear live snakes in public. I guess if I had, the truth comes out. Um, I guess if I had, the truth comes out. Um, I, I mean, from like a performance standpoint, or, you know, or an artist's standpoint, I think that that it, and I don't think it's gonna be something that gets out of hand, you know? I mean, maybe there can be like a clause about like if, you know, the animal can be kept under control, or, you know, or something like that. Um, I mean, a- and that being said, I, I think that, like, birds in public could be more problem than snakes in public, or, you know, or, or, you know, or potentially, you know, just as likely to carry diseases, or infect someone's eye out, or who knows what, what could happen. And then, let's see, uh, hedgehogs were never mentioned. Maybe it doesn't matter. I, I know people with hedgehogs, but may, I don't, I don't know if we need to mention every pet that people could have or not. Um, but otherwise, I, I really appreciate, uh, the thoroughness of this and, and your attentiveness to going back over a very old code, and so thank you for that.
Okay, Councilman Royal.
I'm sorry. Your job must be so hard. All of the animal issues that people could have and having to capture them. Um, so I just wanted to relay that I did get a letter from a community member, um, who is concerned about the horse carriage in Old Town. I don't know if other, um, council members received the letter, but I feel like this is the right place to bring it up. Um, they felt that the horses had not lived very long, who are involved in that carriage, and had concerns about their welfare. And I see that this addresses that the horse has to be treated well and in good condition. And my observations are that that horse seems, um, perfectly fine, but this person felt that, that that was, um, they were concerned about that operation, that draft horses pulling carriages, um, don't seem to have very long or happy lives was their concern. So, um, I just thought I'd pass it along in the context of this conversation. And then I do see that we have, yeah, I can, I've known people that have like flying squirrels and hedgehogs and all kinds of crazy stuff. So I don't know if that'll be covered in the exotics category, or, um, or whether that would go under small mammal, but perhaps we should consider either modifying small mammals so it's less specific, or, um, or adding in some of the other popular small mammals. But I'm sure this is really, uh, uh, just the tip of the iceberg of what you deal with.
All right. Do you have any other comments?
All right. Actually, I do. Um, just in the small mammal, it does say no more than ten. So I would imagine they probably wouldn't own more than ten hedgehogs, or, oh, what?
It says ten, more than ten domestic rodents.
Right. So, w- that just includes not just, it's not limited to all those listed here. It's also, for instance, a hedgehog or a flying squirrel, or-
Certain of those aren't technically rodents, which is why we're adding it in the non-traditional and exotic section.
Oh, got it. Okay. All right. Do we have a, a motion or a question?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, but are, are there any amendments you guys wanna do, make to it, to this?
The snake amendments?
Do you feel like you have direction to make, to make the changes that you need, and you're gonna bring back the second draft, or do you want us to go through amendment by amendment by amendment by amendment tonight?
Perhaps I could suggest that we come back to you with a fairly comprehensive list of the things that we talked about tonight, and then you guys, uh, at the adoption process could strike them out. It'd be a lot easier to strike them out than to add them in. And you could decide whether there are any that you don't feel should be prohibited.
So then the motion would just be the motion, um, to also direct staff to make the changes to bring to the next.
Yes.
Um, I'll make a motion, uh, to waive reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number nine eighteen dash CS, an ordinance of City Eureka amending title nine, chapter ninety-one, sections ninety-one point zero zero one through ninety-one point nine nine nine, animals of the Eureka Municipal Code with, uh, added amendments for staff to-
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Can I make a comment before we vote?
Yes.
I, I, it's, it's definitely, I, I'm certainly fine to proceed in this case, because it sounds like a lot of work has been done and will be done. But in general, this is a lot of changes to approve, um, even if we know we're gonna have another reading. So it would be my preference in the future that we try to find a path forward to not vote on something that we're gonna make such comprehensive changes to. But in this case, because we know what they are, and we've talked about them ad nauseam, I think we can proceed. But, um, just, I don't know if other people feel that way, but, but I have, on this issue, I feel fine about it, but there, I can imagine others where I would go, you know what? No, this is too much. Um, I don't feel like we have enough information. That said, I'm ready to proceed.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor. Did you have another discussion?
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
I just wanted to, um, also mention that what you brought forward here has, um, has actually, like, uh, like answer reforms and, um, aridactile. Um, so, uh, and it just is a lot shorter, so I'm not sure if that's helpful or if it hinders. So I'm not sure what you're gonna do with the language there, but the example does make it a little more readable. I mean, you know, easier to understand in some ways. None of this particular category except. So, just a comment.
Sure.
I just want to thank you so much for all the hard work you did. I know you worked a long time on this, and you do a great job. And I hear good things about you in the community, even though sometimes situations are tough. So, we appreciate you.
I do too.
All right. Moving on to, uh, our reports and action items. I'll invite Director Gerving Up to talk about fire apparatus replacement.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so we're discussing tonight fire apparatus replacement. Just a little bit of background, Humboldt Bay Fire uses a, a fleet that's comprised of a combination of apparatus, engine, truck, engines, trucks, and, and other specialty equipment, uh, that are owned by its parent agencies, both the City of Eureka and Humboldt Number One Fire District. Uh, while I said here that the oldest piece of city apparatus is twenty-nine years old, that's actually not technically correct, according to an article published in, um, Fire Apparatus Magazine yesterday, featuring some of the city's antique apparatus. There's a nineteen oh four steamer, so eighty-seven years older than this one. But as far as anything that's used on any kind of a regular basis, nineteen ninety-one is the oldest piece of equipment. Uh, so it's beyond its ideal service life, twenty-five years, which includes fifteen frontline and ten in reserve status. For quite some time, the city has purchased solely Pierce apparatus, and, uh, that's been done because of its reliability that's been demonstrated. And then it also allows for consistency in training and operations and maintenance, including stocking some of the common parts that might be necessary to maintain that equipment. Golden State Fire Apparatus is the sole Pierce distributor, uh, in the area. And, uh, the Humboldt Bay Fire Apparatus Committee, which was headed up, I believe, by Battalion Chief Holbert, who's here this evening, uh, recommends, uh, the purchase of a Pierce Arrow XT Type One engine. So here are the, the schematics of what's actually been developed by the apparatus committee. Uh, not going, not going to go into a whole lot of detail on it, but if you have questions, Chief Robertson or Battalion Chief Holbert could answer them. And then this is sort of a representation of something similar, the same model of engine, but, uh, not the actual one. We won't have the Friendship Fire Company markings and, and different doors and that kind of thing. Uh, but this is a, sort of a, a representation of something similar from Pierce. As far as the procurement goes for this actual piece of apparatus, uh, Eureka Municipal Code thirty-nine point four one A allows for this type of sole source procurement, when there's only one reasonable and practical source, uh, and you're trying to maintain compatibility with existing city programs, equipment, or systems. So staff believes that this is really a case where that is true, that it, it benefits the city, uh, and Humboldt Bay Fire to maintain consistency in apparatus, and, and therefore, we've got basically only on, only one choice, uh, for the procurement. Uh, the purchase would actually be done in tandem with Humboldt Number One Fire District, uh, two engines, identical, uh, they're right around seven hundred thirty thousand dollars apiece. The city engine would be financed or leased over a five-year period, uh, with a pretty attractive interest rate, resulting in annual payments of just over a hundred sixty thousand dollars. The Humboldt Bay Fire Board recently authorized, uh, a capital replacement fund, which will be ceded by part of Humboldt Bay Fire's existing reserves. And then in the future, ongoing contributions, which would be on the order of a hundred eighty thousand dollars indexed for inflation in coming years, could come from several sources, uh, whether it's, uh, future Humboldt Bay Fire operational savings, future savings in the Equipment Operations Fund, or budget allocations in Equipment Operations. So what happens on a year-to-year basis could vary depending upon the finances in any given year. And it'll be dependent upon an ongoing analysis of equipment needs, which apparatus must be replaced when. And, uh, Director Malar and I have worked with Chief Robertson, uh, to look at documentation that was put together by Humboldt Bay Fire about, uh, when different pieces of apparatus will, will need to be replaced over the coming, say, fifteen years. And that's where that figure came from, the hundred eighty thousand dollars index for inflation. Uh, but staff does intend to return to council with more specific information about this ongoing capital replacement fund at a future meeting. So with that, you've got staff's recommendation. I'm available for questions, and as I mentioned, Chief Robertson and Battalion Chief Holbert are available as well.
Do we have any questions? All right, seeing none, I will open it up to the audience to see if there's any comments from the audience. Seeing none, I will bring it back for comments, or, oh.
Having been the fire chief for a year, one of my goals was to bring stability to organization and to our partner parent agencies. And I'm just, uh, really happy, proud, and excited at the collaboration we've done with the city and the district, with the apparatus committee, with our new finance director, Malar, and all the staff to come up with not just a five-year strategic plan, but a twenty-year replacement plan for Humboldt Bay Fire and fire protection in the community. So I wanted to thank all of those people, and also thank you for your support.
Um, so I'm not sure how much fire engines cost at all for replacing the engines. It seems really expensive. I'm wondering if maybe there can be some sort of fundraising, livestock auction, I don't know, or, you know, something worth money. Or, uh, you know, a fireman's ball of some sort to maybe raise some of the funds, you know, with, with donations, rather than strictly city funds. Just throwing it out there.
Thank you. All right. Any more public comment? All right. Seeing none, I will bring it back for, uh, statements or a motion.
Well, I'd like to make a motion. I really appreciate our fire department. I think they do an amazing job. And just in the last year, it's just incredible, the changes that have been made. It's just amazing. So, uh, I make a recommendation that we authorize this sole source procurement. Oh, wait, is that it? Yeah. Sole source procurement of a Pierce Arrow XT Type One fire engine from Golden State's Fire Apparatus, GSFA, in the amount of seven hundred, no, seven, what is it? Yeah, seven hundred twenty-nine. I work at a school, too. Can you believe that? It must be late. Seven hundred twenty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents to be financed over a period of five years.
And I think it was a seventy-two cent that threw you off.
It mu- I think it did, yeah.
Don't forget the seventy-two cents.
It's that seventy-two cent.
Do we have a-
I'll, I'll second that.
In discussion. All right. All in favor? Round it up.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. And now we're gonna move on to item D two, reorganization and budget reduction plan. And for this, we're gonna hear from our city manager, Greg Sparks. I see our finance directors in the audience, too.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I, I titled this reorganization budget reduction plan. In a sense, it really is an interim reorganization and budget reduction plan, and I certainly note that in the report. That, um, as we, you know, we're just over three months into the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year, and when this budget was developed, um, in a sense, it, it did have a structural deficit in that we were taking about a million dollars out of reserve in order to balance the budget. As we continue to monitor just kind of where we're at from, uh, sales tax revenues, lodging tax revenues, decided to do a budget reduction now rather than wait until mid-year, or, or, um, or quite frankly, just, um, deal with potentially more significant issue at the twenty twenty, twenty-one budget. So, um, we decided predominantly, one of the main goals of city council for the last five years, as we've headed into budget, is to, uh, in a sense, do the budget in, in a sustainable, responsible way that doesn't result in personnel layoffs. We have not had any personnel layoffs since, uh, I think, the twenty fifteen, sixteen budget. And we've been able to accommodate those, in a sense, those increases in unfun- unfunded pension liability costs and other cost increases through combination of, of different reorganizations that we've gone through in departments. We've, uh, every year, as you know, we, we take a very close look at our, our, our fee revenue, uh, and, and really try to make sure that we, 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 we address those kind of things on an annual basis. So with the, uh, with the recent departure of both the Development Services Director, Rob Homeland, here the first of September, uh, his deputy director, Lee Malar, who moved back to finance in July with, uh, into that position. We, we've had two management positions in Development Services that are, are vacant. So we really took that as an opportunity to really kind of look at what we're doing in that department, how to, uh, utilize those cost savings, and yet still try to maintain the same level of, of service within the department. So the reorganization pulls the economic development function of the, the employee, uh, there and move that into the city manager's office, and will run economic development from the manager's office. Planning will be joined with the Building Department under the direction of Public Works Director. And our two, uh, Housing, uh, employees will, will report to Finance Director Malar. And then the property management piece, uh, which had been done by project manager, she has taken on much more additional responsibility in planning over the last, uh, year. That property management function will go more into our facility operations at, at Community Services. So what we've identified between both the added development services, about three hundred thousand dollars in savings, another hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred in savings from three other departments, EPD, Community Services, and Public Works, uh, really ends up with, we're projecting a much smaller amount to take out of reserves to, to keep this budget whole. And, uh, I think we'll just improve our financial position going into the next fiscal year budget, and at the same time, provide some level of flexibility for whoever your incoming city manager is next year to evaluate how, uh, the Development Services functions being ha- is, in a sense, is being, uh, coordinated with the Planning and Building Department. They can evaluate that over a period of time, and then make decision as to whether or not you need to hire another director position at some point. So I think what this does, right, again, it provides flexibility to the city, improves our financial sustainability going into the next year budget. And, uh, and with that, it's, it's really on here, it's just a receiving report. I, I don't think there's anything here that wasn't, um, say, outside the scope of my decision-making, because we aren't adding any employees, but we certainly went, from a council standpoint, from a community standpoint, to just kind of know that these are changes that were being put into place. But I, I can answer any questions you have in regard to it.
Councilman Messner?
So we've seen quite a, um, just a lot of excitement and a lot of movement in the Planning Department. And so how do you see this affecting that, this dispersment of them? And, and, and also from the city's point of view, that's been a very, um, robust and, um, positive- And also from the city's point of view, that's been a very robust and positive thing that's happened within the city the last five years. So I just want to... I'm concerned that it could create a deflation to do this dispersment, and it could create some issues, not only within the department, but that within the interactions with the city and how people... where do they go? And how do they... is it... I mean, just being all lumped into kind of one big department. I just... those are some concerns I have.
Yeah, the functions really don't change, you know, from a planning standpoint, economic development. Those things remain, and certainly as I've met with the staff early on, we've been able to accomplish all those good things because we do have good people in positions that are always looking for better ways of doing things right. We've, you know, we've lost a director who certainly helped push the envelope in a lot of areas, whether it's on zoning code and just a number of significant measures in the past five years. But that has really laid a foundation for moving forward, and I think you're going to continue to see that forward momentum.
I think I'm really glad you added interim when you opened this up.
Yes.
I think that we want, at least I would like to be perfectly clear, that this is a transitional period. But from my perspective, and I've said this many times, in order to support all of our other programs, we have to really make sure we continue to focus on our development, and that means good planning, and that means, you know, really focusing on economic development and having somebody come in and not look at this as a cost-saving measure. But how do we bring somebody in to continue that momentum? And I think when we talked, you have mentioned that as well, that that's kind of the ultimate goal. I'm just going to say I'm not going to let it go. I wouldn't be a dog with a bone on that one. Anybody else have any comments? It's just a report, so you can just comment.
Oh, okay. Well, I have a comment, two comments, I suppose. One is that the staff memo under conclusions says the recommended salary reductions of $451,500. And I think there were some salary savings from unfilled positions and certainly some other savings from a combination of other things, but we haven't reduced anyone's salary. So we're not going around cutting people's salaries.
Right, that's... yeah, that's probably not... yeah, that's not really accurate. The $300,000 in Development Services was predominantly salary savings from the two vacant positions. The $151,500 out there, the three departments, none of that was salary savings. It was all more operational budget-type savings that were identified, so.
Great, yeah, I mostly just wanted to...
Yep, that's a good point.
We're not cutting people's salaries. That sounds horrible. And but, you know, I understand what you meant. And I just want to state that I value the staff in Development Services so very much, who are now being perhaps temporarily reorganized. And thank you for your patience and willingness to try this. And I look forward to us hiring a new city manager and them making some staffing decisions along with us. Not that I'm anxious to see Greg go, but I just look forward to that person being able to help us make a really good decision in that regard. And I certainly hope this doesn't feel like, oh, well, your director left, so we don't care about you. Because it certainly doesn't feel that way, I'm sure, to any of us. And so thank you for weathering the changes.
Councilman Castellano.
Well, firstly, I appreciate the proactive measure that you're taking and we're taking with looking at the budget and, you know, really wanting to be responsible with the city's funds now and to not create a problem for the future. And then my only kind of, I guess, question is just, is there any sort of recourse or support for staff? Just in terms of, like, does it seem like people are going to be overworked or not able to... You know, I mean, I think that having the zoning code complete was a huge endeavor for the Development Services. So I feel like since that's kind of out of the way, you know, maybe there's a little more breathing room, but I don't know, just...
Right, there still is a lot more work to do. We have the... working with Coastal Commission, you know, certainly the portion of the zoning code has not been adopted in the coastal zone yet, and that's still a big issue to be addressed. We certainly believe we are short on planning staff right now, and we're going to closely monitor that as we go forward over the next several months. And we'll certainly try to balance out the workload, but again, we will look closely if we need to hire any additional planning assistance.
Councilman Royal.
I just thought of a question. This report did make it seem like the changes were pretty minimal within many of the departments. And then when Director Slattery was up, he stated that there had been some reorganizations.
Yes.
And that wasn't really talked about in this report. And so I was wondering if you could touch on that. It didn't seem like it jived exactly with the report that we got.
With... see, Director Slattery did not stay for all of the animal ordinance. But really some of the reductions that he was able to accomplish in Community Services was with some of the staff turnover and some higher positions and in a sense kind of underfilling those. So really was able to identify both some cost savings, both on some positions, as well as, I think, some other operational savings. But right, there wasn't any reduction in the number of employees, so. And I know EPD's changes were all related to, again, operational savings, nothing that came out of personnel expense. I think the chief was looking closely at both the amount of funds he had in for lateral transfers, though, the bonus system. They greatly increased their ammunition budget, looking at things like that, so I think kind of a number of areas.
All right, have we all done the report?
Actually, and this is... they're for public comment because this is not a city manager, under city manager report, so.
I just put it under city manager. I am so sorry. That's why you were looking at it that way. Do we have any public comment? All right, seeing none. We just received the report.
Yes.
Now it's time for your report. Do you have anything?
There's nothing else under city manager reports tonight, Mayor.
Okay, come on in.
Just pointing out there, I think that we could maybe start looking into trying to do fundraising when we can, like I had already addressed with the fire engine thing, which is what it is. But, I mean, $700,000 is a lot of jobs. So maybe if, you know, we can try to somehow get some sort of fundraising going on in our community, that'd probably be good. I mean, we're getting a lot of these businesses, these pot businesses, they could give back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've gone through our city manager report. We're... it's time for council reports, but I have something to add. And I don't know where I do it. I guess I should have done it at the very beginning. But it... over and over again, I keep hearing about lighting issues. Bonnie brought it up, somebody brought it up to me in the last week. I think we heard it on a couple of reports tonight. Is there any... have we ever done a light audit of the city? Do we know... do we have an assessment of where our dark areas are or even where our burnt-out lights are? Is there something we can do about that?
Actually, Mayor, I noticed when I was in Old Town the other night that there were a lot of streetlights out, the decorative streetlights in Old Town. And talked with Eureka Main Street Director Charlotte McDonald yesterday about those. She was going to go out in the evening and do an inventory of those and communicate that to PG&E. Other than that, we do have, we have lighting standards. And certainly when PG&E came in, it's been two, maybe close to three years ago now, and did the upgrade to LED lighting, I think we saw certainly an improvement in kind of the amount of lumens that were kind of directed down onto streets and sidewalks. But right, the... and there are... so I think typically unless we find where a standard isn't being met, but also then homeowners have the ability to contact PG&E if they want additional light that on their property, there's a cost to that, and PG&E has a system in place to handle that.
I almost wonder if we can get a volunteer task force and grid the city and just have people go and mark down where everything is. Because it really is coming from here and there and yonder, and it's... and it's a problem, so. Anyways, I'm not saying you have to do that right now. I'm just saying, we should think about it. It keeps coming up. And with that, I will start with the council reports, and we'll start down with Councilmember Galveston.
Well, I just have a brief report. I attended the Service Fair for St. Vincent de Paul. And I just so appreciate our community and the effort that came out and all the people that were out and all the opportunities for people, you know. Back when people were more localized, we used to have service fairs once a week towards the end of... before the vacation, and it seemed to make a real impact on people, those connections. And some people didn't necessarily take the services at the time, but certainly they met the people and they were able to kind of build those relationships. So it was a really big deal, and there were a lot of people there. Councilmember Castellano was doing the raffle, and it was just a great... the chief was there, just a lot of people. And I think that that's how we make positive difference in our city, is by creating community when people don't feel they're a part of our community. And that was a big gift, and I'm so grateful that we honored Mary Price tonight because that woman is incredible. Did I say her name right? Mary, yeah. She's an incredible person. And, you know, she donates to the Milk Fund with the Women's Club. There's a lot of things that she does that we don't know about, and so I just wanted to say how much I appreciate her. And then lastly, just to let everybody know, this coming weekend, right, October 5th, is Bark at the Park? Right? Yeah, 5K Sequoia Park, 10... what is it? Starts at 10, 10 to 1. So I hope to see you out there. Nice hills.
I'd just like to remind everyone that Humboldt Sponsors Annual Rummage Sale is this weekend at Redwood Acres, Saturday and Sunday. It's a rummage sale that benefits a charity for children in the community. Humboldt Sponsor has been around for well over a quarter century now and have helped to raise millions of dollars for youth programs and many awesome things for kids in the community. So if you feel like you want to shop around for knickknacks, check out some cool donated stuff up for sale. It's at Redwood Acres this weekend, so you're supporting charity.
So just a reminder for folks in the community, if you'd like to come to a public forum and meet the candidates for city manager, we will have a public forum on Friday, October 11th at 5:00 PM at the Warfenger. Did they get that all right? Okay, so folks are welcome to come out, meet the candidates, and provide feedback about what they thought of them. And it's also a chance for the council to see the candidates in action, interacting with the community.
Would you like to let everybody know that you're going to be gone?
Yes, that's my next thing. So I will be on Coast Guard duty on an emergency oil spill response deployment starting this Friday, and I'll be back at the end of October, the first time in six years that I've been deployed. I've certainly been on duty before, but in those cases, they were dates that I had some control over, not always a lot of control, but this was a surprise that I learned about on Monday. So I will be gone for the... almost an entire month, and I will be back in early November, last day of October. Not sure yet. I'll be on the East Coast, and I'll still be available by phone and email, but it may take me a little longer to reply because I will also be on an emergency response duty rotation. So I don't know yet what that will be. So I encourage community members to continue to contact me as needed, but know that I'm doing my service and that, yeah, I'll let you know how it goes when I get back. And I'll be... I've come up with a plan to have a time to talk with our candidates for city manager in a different format so that I can get a feel for them.
Thank you. We will miss you. So I was... there's some work being done on Myrtle, and there was a public meeting about that that I went to. And I think there might be more coming up. But there's a lot of work being done on Myrtle right now, and that will... traffic will be diverted. And so I believe they're trying to create an ability to share that with the city prior to the road being closed, but that's such a busy street. And so I just wanted to really ensure that that happens for the public. But I think they have a really good plan in place, so I appreciate the Public Works Department doing their due diligence on that and appreciate the meeting they did for the neighbors. So thank you for that. There was a lot that happened during Good Neighbor Week and a lot of great, great things happening throughout the city. And appreciate all the people who put so much work into that. There were a lot of folks throughout the whole city that put on events and did things. So thank you for all the work and also just the good enjoyment that people had in getting to know their neighbors and enjoying time together and connecting with one another and some good ideas that came out of that as well, so. Then also, I had the opportunity to go to a 25-year retirement celebration at McDonald's that was done for one of their employees who had Stown Syndrome, has been working for them for 25 years. And it was a really powerful example to everyone in the room. The McDonald's was packed. Our police... some of our police officers were there, our chief and our officers or our... what'd you say? Captains, sorry. No, our chief wasn't there, but our captains were. And it was an amazing opportunity to see this collaborative between employers and some that may not get jobs otherwise. And it was a very amazing thing. They said that she was one of the best workers they've ever had and that various employees that they have had from this agency has been... have actually been their longest employees, they're most faithful. They generally don't ever call in sick, or when they do, they have a backup plan. I mean, there's just some really interesting things that I learned. And so I would encourage employees or employers to look at the possibilities that we have to support that segment of our community. So it was wonderful to hear that. Also, we are going to be gone this next... the next meeting is we are not having on the 15th because we will be at the League of California Cities Annual Conference, so just wanted to let the public know that as well. And Councilmember Royal will not be there, but she will be gone. But the rest of us will be, and that's a really great annual event that we do with cities around and public officials around the state. So thank you for that, and with that, I think that's it. Thank you.
Let's see, I got to help a little bit with the planning and setup for the St. Vincent de Paul block party. And just, yeah, saw lots of council and people, different community groups there, so thanks to everyone who came out. Let's see, I attended Eureka Main Street Board Meeting, helped plant trees on Good Neighbor Day with Keep Eureka Beautiful, which was really fun. And I thanks Susan for really kind of spearheading Good Neighbor Day. I think it was just a really fun thing for a lot of people. Let's see, I worked with the Eureka Visitor Center, North Coast Repertory Theater, and The Vault, which is another theater group, to organize the Eureka's first fringe festival. And there are, you know, a lot of people came out, really fun shows, a great variety of performances. Also, the performers who came from out of town really loved being in Eureka, had a great time. I got to host them. I got to host them and they're excited to go back and tell their friends to come here, so, you know, just. Eureka really speaks to people when they come to visit and, um, had a surprise of a friend from Berlin who came and, and totally surprised me. And, um, also just was really enjoying the fringe festival and had a great time. And, um, then I also attended, uh, REDEC where Elizabeth Montamoto, uh, talked about the Housing Trust Fund and housing Humboldt.
Alright, and before we go, I'm talking a lot this, this meeting, but, uh, I wanted to follow up with what Heidi said. She was talking about the benefits of hiring, uh, workers with special needs. And the Eureka Chamber of Commerce is gonna be hosting a work for, um, a workforce forum where you get to meet all kinds of workforce partners. Including several who work with, um, special needs and they talk about the benefits you get as an employer and stuff. So if you're interested in learning more, um, visit that. You can meet all kinds of services that will help you hire them. And then the last thing that I want to mention, it's a very exciting thing, is that we have a date. To complete the transfer of Talawat Island. That date is gonna be October twenty first, but the details haven't been figured out completely yet, so keep your eyes open. We will, um, promote it a lot. We're all very excited for it. Um, so I just wanted to let everybody know because we're not gonna have a meeting before that. So until then, we will see you all. That will be our next official meeting, so.
You will be in closed session on October twelfth, but your next, your next special meeting will be on the twenty first.
Okay, that's right. And with that, we're adjourned.